I can see, I have the record button. I don't know why. It's not my channel.
Welcome. We're on.
Should I push it?
It's recording now.
It's recording. Yep. So, welcome everyone to Next Economy MBA. Sorry for the repeat. We're having this special session on building resilience in the face of the global pandemic of COVID. And this is an opportunity for us to connect with one another virtually while many of us are sheltering in place. And the prompt is which cohort you're from, your name, and how you're building either personal resilience or how you're building resilience in your community. And we'll just keep these brief, but you know, feel free to share what's alive for you right now. And then we can use this time to do breakouts or kind of what emerges. So I will start, Erin, and I'm really honored to be learning from you all as a facilitator role in the MBA. And I am building personal resilience by using my garden as a place to forage for food. I've been making cleavers juice and lemon balm juice every morning and harvesting edible greens and planting a lot of seeds. And community-wise, feeling really grateful to be a part of a NorCal resilience network that is organizing to support our most marginalized communities and also organizing within No Boss Northern Bay Area Worker Cooperative Association. I can't remember the acronym, but No Boss Network of Bay Area Worker Cooperatives. There we go. And so I will pass it to Wendy.
Hi, everybody. I'm in Cohort Four. We just started a few weeks ago. Super thankful and excited to have the opportunity to have this space and share it with you all. I'm in Maine, and we're not sheltering in place yet, but you can see it coming for sure. Both of my kids are home from school. I have 14-year-old and a 10-year-old. So we're building resilience through our new routines and started really creating some cool spaces at home and carving out new nooks in the house and focusing on all those sort of educational opportunities that maybe we miss going to school, doing lots of artwork and physical education and outdoor experiences and lots of family sharing. But certainly a difficult time, and I'm personally building resilience by trying to think about what good is going to come out of this. I think about things that like the environmental impact of the world stopping has got to be positive. And I'm hoping that there's lots of people studying that so we can show the evidence and results and respond to that better in the future. Thinking about this idea that we've been learning about in our core principles about creating local ecosystems. And I think this is really driving home the importance of that and the nature of community.
Should we pass it to?
Yeah, if you could pass after you go, that would be helpful. Maybe I'll just pass it to the next on my screen, Jake.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jake Ifshin. I'm part of Cohort Number One. And I'm building resilience, personal resilience through deepening my own practices around yoga, meditation, getting into nature every day, running, things like that, just using the space to do that kind of like personal growth and development as well as organizing all my stuff, getting ready to grow a lot of the plants in the spring. It's a lot of gardening right now with my community. Writing a lot of educational material and curriculum for independent schools, for parents to start, use this time at home to be growing with their children, to be sharing. So I was working on this afternoon was creating a lot of content and sharing a lot of links and information about how to start gardening at home, both inside and outside, and living a little bit more regeneratively. So creating that kind of information for the community. And I'm working right now on starting to do a free webinar every day next week is our goal to start covering different topics around resilience in the community, focusing on nature connection, growing our own food, and also personal routines and wellness strategies, things like that. So we're trying to make some more, build some community here and do it, do it through Zoom or do it through another meeting platform. That's it for now. Thank you for hosting. It's great to see everybody.
Thank you so much. And we are delighted and surprised that there are 21 of you on the call. And so just another reminder of brevity in the share so we can hear all voices. And then we will, we'll move into breakout groups so that we have a little bit more one-on-one time to share a prompt at that time. So Suzanne, you willing to go?
Hi, I'm Suzanne. I'm part of Cohort Four. I'm in Seattle, kind of the epicenter of everything. And so I've got my four kids home from school. And how I'm practicing resilience is in a lot of ways kind of using this sort of forced pause to slow down, take a step back, see the silver lining in all of it. And I think what has really kind of helped me is looking at my kids who are not watching the news and reading articles endlessly, and they're smiling and happy, and they're running around outside, and they're just enjoying this time, you know, having more time with their family. So I think that's a great lesson, and that's really showing me some resilience. So you know, part of the, you know, the effects, right, of information and over-information and, and you know, the, the negative effects of that and, you know, being aware of that. So yeah, and, and thank you for having this call because I felt like I needed a community to talk about these things with. So this is really great. I'm really grateful. Thank you.
Jasmine?
Hello, I am part of Cohort Three. I'm here in Fairfield, California, in the Bay Area. And I guess what I am doing to keep myself resilient is basically, you know, keeping myself informed and not too much, and also just really appreciating, although there is, you know, the social distancing, but the togetherness this is actually bringing for all of us as well.
Cindy?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having this. My name is Cindy, and I'm out of San Diego, and I'm in Cohort Number Four. I am trying, so I've been a virus news junkie since December when it came out of Wuhan. And so I think I've actually spent a lot of time thinking about it and seeing the response from family, friends, and coworkers. Particularly this past week, I really tried to focus on the things that someone said earlier, what we haven't been doing, because now we have a forced pause. I feel like oftentimes we keep saying things like, we'll do it when there's time. And so really focusing on the positive. Like mental wellness, doing more yoga, and then trying to think outside the box of trying to make connections with other groups, which I think is really important. So I'm really grateful for this opportunity to share. Thank you.
Molly Rose?
Hey, y'all. I'm Molly Rose. I'm in Cohort Four, and I'm super grateful for this support group right now. I moved down to Alabama. I'd never been here before about a month ago with a job that provided housing in a big community, and we all got let go on Friday. So there are no students. All the schools are shut down here. We're a field trip-based program. So now I live at a summer camp on a farm and conservation center with like 100 other super awesome people that are also in quarantine. And so we just started teaching PD classes to each other. So we're just like educating each other now and like getting to use all the camp facilities and like growing our own food. It actually feels like kind of apocalyptic, but also awesome. So I'm really not sure how this is going to look in like three weeks, but I'm hunkering down here and learning a bunch of new stuff and just trying to like come out of it with a little more knowledge than I went into it. I'll pass it to Melissa.
Hi. Can you guys hear me? Okay, sometimes my audio doesn't work. I'm Melissa in Morro Bay, California. I was in Cohort Two. And I feel like I have this like tension between personal resilience and community resilience because I feel this big like call to action, and I also feel exhausted. And people, a lot of folks are mentioning, they feel like they have more time. I feel like I have less time because I have all the same responsibilities I did have. Now I'm also homeschooling my two young children. So it's, it's been interesting, and I know it'll all shake out and we'll find our new rhythms. And I am already seeing really great things in the community. Where my company is a food producer, and there are other food producers who are offering at-cost or deeply discounted food and home deliveries, and that's been really encouraging. And I'm hoping that our company can, can find a way to get really healthy nutritious food to our community in a way that works in this new constantly evolving context. I'll pass it to Nicole.
Hello. Me, Nicole? Hi, so I am doing mostly just personal resilience at this point. I have like a lot of health anxiety, so I'm just like, oh, my God. So I'm, I moved back in with my parents from Boston. And I'm just kind of like hunkering down here, trying to get a routine going, trying to, but like zooming non-stop, you know, like constantly like zooming people and even just like working at home with someone over Zoom quietly. And that, that's been really good. And yeah, just, just feeling unabashedly, you know, about, feeling unashamed about reaching out to people I wouldn't normally reach out to. Yeah. So I'd like to get more involved with like Boston mutual aid things though, because those are popping up and they look very nice, very good. I'll pass it to Rebecca.
Hi, I'm Rebecca. I was in Cohort Two. I live in Seattle. So we've been in this for about two and a half weeks, and my son's school was one of the first to shut down here for at least six weeks, so we're well into that. And I agree with Melissa. For me, it hasn't slowed down one, but it's ramped up times 50, it feels like, trying to do everything plus. So I'm building resilience by just taking deep breaths, being on a group Voxer channel with two of my best friends. We're just keeping each other laughing all day long. At least one person is able to keep the others laughing. And then in my work, and in my, just for myself, I've been working with the mantra for a couple of weeks now. I was still teaching yoga about a week ago, and that's, that's not happening anymore. But I'm bringing it to my staff and myself, a mantra of we are healthy and strong and resilient. And we just keep saying that to ourselves. And fortunately, this whole week in Seattle, the forecast is sunny, so that is really helping with resilience here. I'm sorry, I got a little bit late, so I don't know who's gone or not.
Pass to Patrick.
Okay, Patrick.
You're muted still, Patrick.
This is Patrick. I started in Cohort Three and then started again in Cohort Four. Personal resilience. It's interesting thinking about like the zones of connection and I feel like the, the zone that I've been active in has been my house and our seven people here. And then really just like the close, close friends and family, like on Monday when the shelter in place order, I'm in Berkeley now, but in Alameda County in the Bay Area, the shelter in place order came out, it was like on the phone with everybody, you know, grandma, mom, dad, friends everywhere, checking in on everybody. So yeah, it's interesting because that's kind of like community, but it's also very like the people that I'm really close to. And it's, yeah, watching me and people that I'm close to get more active in our garden and, and really appreciate that resource of consistent, fresh, nutritious greens and wild plants on the land. Yeah, I guess that's my check-in right now. Thinking about economic resiliency for sure. Friends losing jobs and stuff and makes a lot of what we talk about here at Lift a lot more relevant. Oh, and I will pass it. I can do that myself. Suzanne.
Suzanne already went to the beginning, but Rumi hasn't gone yet.
Hi, everyone. I started in Cohort Three, and I'm picking up in Cohort Four, just like Patrick. I'm in New York City. It's very, it's interesting being here. I'm new to the city. So the way that I'm developing resiliency is really getting settled. I just moved into my permanent living situation, and I painted my room. So I kind of, I'm psychologically like looking forward to keep myself sane. So I like painted and situated my world here, and that's really helping me. I've been out of work since the 12th, and it's giving me a lot of time to work on personal business. I can't imagine what people with children are going through right now, and I want to put that out there for all of you. I wish I could, there was a virus going around. I'd offer my services as a babysitter or something. But yeah, so it's really just kind of got me thinking a lot, actually. And I'm really glad that this is happening. And we're having this conversation about what, what needs to happen? What is it, what does it need to look like moving forward in order for us to prepare for something like this? Because it's probably going to happen again. We need to plan a action. So I'm glad that we're all here to wrap our heads around it and hearts around it. Did I answer everything? Do I need to pass to anyone? Is everyone gone?
No, but I could pass to Alana.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So I'm feeling pretty懵懵地 considering everything that's happening right now in terms of how my own life is being affected. I've been in the midst of looking for work, and now work actually has been almost created more as a result of this situation. Then starting to work as a local farmer with marketing and sales, and now I'm doing a lot more door-to-door delivery. So there's a lot more going on with that this week. But otherwise, yeah, just trying to, yeah, wrap my head around the multi-systemic effect that this is happening for people and trying to understand what we can do, what I can do, and what each of us individually can do to both shelter the spread of the virus, but also somehow buffer economically, you know, small businesses right now that are still open, at least in my area, because I live in a more rural area. So there's still businesses open. And yeah, so trying to kind of balance out that effect somehow, to still support them and also still isolate enough. Yeah, so really glad that this conversation is happening right now, too, because I've been really wanting to dive deeper with.
Thank you. Carrie?
Hi, everyone. My name is Carrie, and I am from Cohort One. I'm calling from Oakland, California. This very small business that I work for, we've got a total of eight employees, including me and the owner. Where I'm the head of HR and finance, we are closed. We're considered a nonessential business. So I am sheltering in place at the moment. And I've been working really hard to take care of our employees, to figure out financial streams for them, how to find financial streams for our business, to take care of them and us. So like a lot of you are saying, I don't feel like I'm slowing down at all right now. But again, I'm reaching, you know, my heart goes out to the people who have children, too. But it must be really hard, but also I know really enjoyable and, you know, in a really loving way. And how I'm taking care of myself in a resilient fashion. So I'm setting up my workstation here, finally getting Wi-Fi. I've been resisting getting Wi-Fi for 10 years. And they tried to put it in a week ago, but they were unsuccessful at meeting their appointments. So hopefully we can make this quick and nobody is, we'll keep our social distance while it's happening. And then, yeah, just taking walks. There's a lot of people taking walks, I find, in Oakland right now, which is kind of neat, I think. And I'm really excited, actually. I think this is a, this is a turning point. This is a place and time where we can really affect change and really big change. And so being able to think about that has been the silver lining to this whole thing for me. Anyway, that's my check-in.
Carrie, Melanie?
Hey, my name's Melanie. I think I was Cohort Three if this is currently Cohort Four. I am usually based out of Atlanta, but this week it just happened to line up that I was already planning some travel to be with my parents and my grandmother who is visiting. So I'm actually down on the Gulf Coast. I can tell you, people here are not sheltering in place. It is like pandemonium because it is middle of spring break, and people have gone crazy because they really want to be at the beach and at the bars and wherever else spring break people go. So I'm just here trying to do some remote work as possible, trying to help out my Atlanta community as much as I can remotely, and then taking care of my family as they need it. So yeah, it's been a different experience here than some of the other places, I think. I don't know that anyone knows or believes that there is a shelter in place order or a pandemic happening.
Thanks, Melanie. Milliaku?
Hi, sorry, I'm double tasking. I'm Milliaku. I use she/her/hers. I do a lot of things right now. There's a huge, like, super active coalition in Atlanta to put a moratorium on bickings, get rent frozen. So just doing a lot of meetings and like logistics on, on that. And like, we're trying to figure out what can we do from our homes besides petitions. I work with a lot of, do a lot of work with food justice in general, so just been like ramping that up. I didn't do any deliveries today or any pickups or anything today because I'm like, went to the doctor, and I feel like that's a lot outside of my house. And yeah, we like, we, Food Not Bombed, we usually just have distributions, and people come and they take food and then they leave. But now we've had to try and come up with different systems where we can like minimize people's contact with each other. Like, it's a pandemic. And like, you know, it's going to feel like, everything's going to feel like an overreaction, like if it works. So trying, trying to make it work. Yeah, and just like creating new, a bunch of new relationships with the businesses who are throwing all their stuff out, trying to cook meals for people who are on the street because the city just destroyed two major houselessness encampments. Yeah, just like ramping up what we already have done. And I think that's why it's so important to have these networks and systems and coalitions that are actually built on something and not post, just we post it in on each other's website and place so that when these disasters do happen, we have a group of people who are ready to jump to action. Because we have 300 deliveries, but we also have 200 volunteers. And that's because we had a network in place beforehand where we were like using mutual aid for our projects. So yeah, I think this just shows us, you know, something that we who tend toward a more abolitionist tendency know is, which is that we got us. And we are the infrastructure, no matter what the infrastructure is, no matter who is for it's us. And we have the power, and our lives are insignificant, and a lot of the labor that is done in the world is unnecessary and seen. Thanks. Nice to meet y'all.
Thank you, Milliaku. And we have a few more voices. So just as we round out, we are going to move into breakouts and I just have to hear the rest of the voices. So Marissa? Or you can also pass. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hey, everyone. My name's Marissa. I'm part of Cohort Three. And yeah, I'm a teacher in San Francisco, and I live in Berkeley, or in Oakland. And my school closed last week, and it's just been really interesting watching that process with all the schools closing. My school fortunately was preparing for a closure like a week before it happened. So now I'm doing just online meetings and some classes and sending home assignments. And I'm really grateful for, for the fellow educators who are part of my team. Yeah, it feels really good to be part of the school that I work at. It's called Alta Vista School. So I'm feeling really grateful for that. And I have had a lot more time on my hands because I'm not teaching like, let's see, 16 classes a week and doing tons of duties. And instead, you know, my classes are being sent home. But yeah, I'm able to do a lot of projects at home right now. So I just planted a mushroom garden and planted new seeds and built shelving in my garage and learned new power tools and been going on hikes. So that feels really good. And in terms of reaching out to other communities, it's felt good to connect with all of you right now and just connect with other groups of friends, women's groups and other circles in chats and just share resources. And I do have a resource that someone sent me in the Bay Area. It's like an Excel sheet of a lot of different, yeah, places that you can reach out for small business owners and, you know, people that need childcare and other resources. So I'm going to share that in the chat window. Thank you.
Rachel?
Hey, y'all. I'm Rachel. There she pronouns, Cohort Four here in Atlantic Beach territory or Brooklyn, New York. Resilience, I guess, you know, kind of goes between the community and the personal community-wise. I was late to this call because I was on a mutual aid call from my neighborhood. Kind of wild how it takes this shit to connect with people closest around in the neighborhood, but it was a really good call. And there's so much popping up, you know, that's grounded in, as Milliaku was saying, like so much work that has been done before, but then also coming to fruition now. And the flow of resources just makes me show, shows me so much more how the work we're trying to create is not as possible. It's just here. It's just not the one that's given attention to most of the time. Also personally, I sew, so I'm taking the opportunity to get back to my sewing machine, thinking about making some folks some. thinking about making some folks some Fanny Go Packs. And also I happen to be taking an herbalism course right now. And one of my friends was like, well, now it's applied herbalism. So trying to make some different healing remedies for, for folks that I know and that I don't know.
Thank you. Leah?
Yeah, hey, y'all. Let me just pull up the prompt. My name's Leah. I'm with the MBA Four Cohort. Yeah, I am one of those in the gig economy who has lost all of my like regular income streams, which has resulted in me having a lot of time on my hands where I've been stepping into a lot of community resilience building efforts. I'm part of an herbalism co-op and we're, yeah, mobilizing a lot of our resources, making tons and tons of herbal medicines to distribute in our community. We have like 100 hand sanitizers that I made with pure ethanol. If anybody in Oakland, Bay Area needs that, we're like doing some fundraising to cover our costs on that so we can get out fireside or another immune boosting medicine to our community. Also working a lot with Gil Track Farm in North Berkeley around food distribution networks. We're still, we shut down for at least this week fully, but are using this time to understand how we can continue to be like a source of food and a hub for the community. So if anybody is working in similar ways for food distribution, please get at me because I would love to just understand what other farmers in the area are doing. And let's see what else. We're also talking a lot amongst ourselves at Permaculture Action Network. We've been working on this Just Transition mapping project in recent times anyway. So starting to talk about like, yeah, how that's like especially relevant in this time and, yeah, understanding how we can really tie that into the crisis that's happening to like raise awareness around the country for like small communities, hubs, urban farms that still can be like a major force for change and support on a local level. Talking about like curating some like online permaculture, community organizing kind of webinars through Permaculture Action Network. Maybe doing like panel discussion to talk about like mutual aid by farmers around the country. Blah, 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 lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of things swirling. So happy that I am feeling well and safe and have the capacity to really focus my full attention on these kinds of things. And yeah, really eager to, yeah, connect with some of you about things happening in the Bay Area or around the country. So please, please do reach out if any of that felt resonant or relevant in the work that you're doing or you'd like to hear or learn more. And similarly, I think Marissa, I also have a lot of like mutual aid spreadsheets and different resources for a lot of different types of situations. So reach out for any reason. Yeah, I'm also hosting a lot of like free like meditations and like yoga classes on Facebook Live. So that's kind of every so often. I'm doing one today at 4:30. So feel free to tune into my personal Facebook page. I'll put my full name on my name here and you can find me by that and stay tuned for more.
Ryan?
Hey, y'all. Good to say hello. This is Ryan. I'm in Oakland, California. I work with Leah and Alexa and other folks with Permaculture Action Network. I'm finding it particularly difficult to like stay on task and focused on kind of like the long game stuff that I've been doing for years. In these moments of, I like really like these moments of crisis. They bring a lot of like opportunity and I kind of thrive in these moments of crisis. But it also means I want to focus on like the current moment and not on like grant applications and like long-term like strategic development and all this kind of stuff. So yeah, I've been trying to find how to balance that. And particularly tuning in with folks who are working on like mutual aid networks, rent and mortgage, like strikes and rented mortgage moratoriums, calls for prisoners to be like released, especially like folks over 55 and nonviolent offenders and like looking out for prisoner solidarity stuff that's happening during this, food distribution hubs and things like that. So yeah, there is a call I know later on tonight that some folks are doing. I think people that were involved with like Occupy Sandy are holding like a conference call at 5:30 across the country to talk about different mutual aid efforts. And I'm also just super.
Can we share that in the chat?
Yeah, I can do that. And yeah, I'm always, I'm just like super interested in how we can, you know, use the present moment to like further liberatory efforts, not just like respond and, and wait till it's over and get back to normal, but instead like use this to, to move beyond the current state of things. So reach out. Good to say hello to you all.
Well, maybe we'll go to the Lift check-ins quickly, whichever Lift team member. And then we have a couple more that just joined. Welcome. Maybe Phoenix would do like.
Hi. It's so great to hear everything that people are doing. It's the antidote to the news cycle. Mostly depressing right now. So I'm Phoenix, LA and a part of Lift. And I, a lot of my work is around emotional intelligence and supporting collaboration and conflict resolution and diversity inclusion work in organizations. And I'm in also, so with some of the communities that are part of, I'm looking at how to support them and how to support myself. One thing is like I noticed that the focus, like I'm also a Dharma teacher. And just last week, just a few days ago, we had our first online meeting, the Sangha, and it was 55 members and it was so sweet. And it was an example of how Zoom, even though I also have Zoom fatigue, I also really appreciate that it's a way that the communities can come together. And I have, I'm part of like a bunch of spiritual communities. And I feel like this is the ripe time, like a lot of times I've felt separate with my new economy work and my spiritual communities I'm part of. But I feel like what it's what Kevin has been talking about is that now in those spiritual communities, there's a no need. It's no longer abstract, systemic, oh yeah, the systems don't work. And so I've been looking at how do I help those communities start to do the work of becoming resilient? And at the same time, I'm exhausted. You know, on one of those calls, MD told me that, you know, she thinks that getting outside is so important that there's been evidence that, how important is nature and immunity? The more you're stressed, the less your immunity. So it's also trying to listen to my body and it's like my vision is over here. My body is over here. But at the same time, if my body, when I, I'm working on projects, like some of the things that Lift is doing to support disseminating some of this information into society and to about the next economy and growing resilience, that also helps my spirit not feel depressed and get overly focused on the fear. So. Yeah, so those are some of my thoughts right now. Yeah, I mean, right now we do, the support to handle the fear is so important so that we can do the next economy stuff because so many people are isolated and anxiety and depression. Sean?
Thanks, Phoenix. Thanks, everybody. I agree, community and people are the medicine. So thanks for the good medicine here. Personal resilience, I also am trying to get outside, also planting a garden, also making a point to say hi to neighbors, even introduce myself to neighbors I haven't met before. We have our two and a half year old daughter home. So I feel like maybe she's more taking care of me. She's been asking to snuggle a lot lately, so that's the medicine for sure. Grateful to my Lift team for co-working with me when I had a toddler on my lap today, which is incredibly disruptive, but really, really precious. So yeah, just, just appreciating that. I'm loving the news and I didn't find the link, but there, there's a study came out that the, already in China due to the slowdown, there's going to be, you know, something like 50 to 100,000 lives saved just due to the emission cuts, so way more than have died already, right? So like, thank God, something stopped this fucking nightmare of capitalism. So I'm just, you know, giving thanks, giving thanks. And yeah, my, my temple, we had Shabbat online on Zoom, you know, like, my daughter has two dance classes a day, or not dance classes, music classes a day of friends that are music teachers and now that's all online. So, you know, just, just appreciating the moment. And yeah, I love Milliaku. Thanks so much. We got us and this is our moment. This is our moment to step up and be here for each other. So thanks for being here. I'll pass to Kevin.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, I'm feeling good. I'm feeling coping, coping. And the, some of the things that come to mind for me, personal resilience. I'm super blessed, have a garden and have supportive family and friends and allies and lots of good work to do. So feeling really blessed about that. Community resilience, checking in on our elder neighbors. It's a task that's kept us feeling energized and contributing and I'm stuck. I need help. Milliaku and Ryan, like the eviction moratoriums and so forth. I mean, like I know the supervisor in District Five, so we've moved Dean Preston here in San Francisco and he's contacting the governor, but like I feel like, what the hell am I doing here at home? Like on the computer trying to advocate, just feels so inadequate for what I want to do to really motivate the, what needs to happen. Yeah, I see Newark is successful in the moratorium. Thanks, Rachel. And yeah, we're, we're having some success here in California, I think, but not nearly as much as I think this moment portends the possibility for. So I need help. I need ideas. All right, check. Erin?
Andrew. And then we have three others.
Hi, everyone. Andrew. And yeah, really grateful, nourished to hear everyone's sharing and how everyone's acting in this moment. I think one of my strategies has been to just try to learn more about the parasite, biological parasite at hand and try and share some of what I'm learning with folks and happy to share that with anyone on this call. And yeah, I'm grateful to be outside right now. I'm just going on a water run. And. Yeah, I also feel very like hesitant to be in celebration of, you know, disruption of things just because I'm feeling very conscious of folks who aren't having a buffer right now. I'm like, yeah, just feeling very leery about, more so, I feel less concerned frankly about the biological parasite than I do about like the social parasites that abound and like cascading economic fallout and small businesses that are really suffering right now, et cetera. So I'm, I remain concerned about that, but really grateful we have our resilience, things in, in momentum. I will maybe hand it off to the other three folks.
Megan?
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Robbins. I was in the inaugural cohort. And nice to connect with you all again. I, I'm in Oakland, Emeryville area and so also in the lockdown situation. And yeah, I mean, just to be like vulnerable, I mean, I've been feeling pretty down and anxious the last, you know, couple of days. It's just a few days since this all kind of came to a climax here. I had been, before all of this happened, I had been feeling very excited, cautiously optimistic about like new business that I had started for myself in the last year. And it seemed like things were going in a really good direction and it was building. And then like this has just caused everything to come to like a screaming halt and I have, you know, zero income now for the foreseeable future. And, you know, if that's just like three weeks or a month, that's a hit, but that's one thing. But like, you know, I don't think this is gonna all be back up and running in three weeks. So the implication of like several months of, of this is, is pretty scary. So yeah, I think I'm trying to figure out how, how to build my own resilience. And so I guess maybe just kind of focusing on self-care at this point. And, and then once I feel like my own self is calmed, that I hope to, you know, be able to be more of a support for my community as well. Yeah, I think building off of what folks have been saying, I mean, to Sean's point, I also like think it's a really interesting opportunity to see the fragility of our systems globally. And that creates a lot of opportunity. And with what Andrew was saying, I, I also am really concerned about the human suffering that that disruption causes. And so hope that we as a local community and state and that nation and global community can really learn the right lessons from this and take this in a good direction.
Okay, Megan. Hiroko?
Hi. Hello. I just got back to SFO last night and so had a really interesting experience. I had traveled with my son to. Amsterdam and Belgium and Germany and met up with family that I hadn't seen in about 33 years. So it was really incredible time there. And I joined the call a little late because I had to catch up on some work. But I'm wondering, has anybody told a joke in this group yet?
Kevin shared a joke in the chat.
Oh, he did?
Kind of a joke.
I'll just start by saying really quick, I'll tell a joke then. Can I tell a joke? It was told to me in Germany and over breakfast and my son and I just cracked up. So I thought I would offer that on the call today. Okay, so there's an airplane that's going down and there are four people on the plane and three parachutes. The people are Brad Pitt, Donald Trump, an elderly gentleman and his grandson. And Brad Pitt grabs a parachute. He says, I'm Brad Pitt. I'm awesome. Everybody loves me. I'm gonna take a parachute. And he proceeds, takes the parachute and jumps down. Donald Trump grabs a parachute, says, well, I'm Donald Trump and I do whatever I want to and I'm taking this parachute from you. See you later. So he jumps down. Then the grandfather says to the grandson, you know, son, I have had my full life. I need you to take the parachute. And the son says, or the grandson says, granddad, I don't, I don't need to do that. There's not a problem because Donald Trump just took my backpack. So they had enough parachutes. I don't know if you think it's funny. I think it's kind of funny. My personal opinion on this is that I think the earth is getting a chance to breathe. I think the animals are winning and they want their planet back. I think the animals are winning and they want their planet back. And I think we're all gonna find ways to like re-appreciate home. You know, I've seen so many kids and their parents together when they are outside. And so, um, yeah, I think that's all for now. Thank you for this call.
Thank you, Hiroko. Um, I'm not sure, Narz is, is that somebody?
Yeah, hi. Hi. This is Nerissa, or you can call me Narz. So I was part of the first Lift economy and I took permaculture with Kevin, um, probably a few years now. So I think, uh, we're sharing just how we feel generally, right?
The prompt is, um, your name and how you're cultivating personal resiliency or community resiliency. And, um, I just maybe to tie in, I know we're five minutes to the hour and apologies. Like we, we're so delighted that all of you showed up. We were gonna do a breakout room. And so honoring that some people may have to leave, but we will after this move into a breakout room for maybe 10 or 15 minutes if we're about that bandwidth.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I'm actually one of the people that probably have to leave soon. But it's nice to pop on and I'll watch the recording. Um, but personally, uh, like I've been involved in doing some international solidarity work, um, with, uh, with the Philippines. And so this has really, um, been, uh, difficult in continuing that organizing or, or just thinking about it in a different way and how to evolve that. And just also thinking about the people who are, um, having shelter in place policies, but when you're under like a fascist, um, government, uh, that could mean martial law. Um, and it becomes more repressive. So, um, just thinking about those people. And then, um, but then this is also this time, this period, um, recognizing the slowing down of, uh, the pace of life. And, and also it's a, a good excuse for me to start, um, talking to my neighbors and, and suggesting like a food garden project. It's not so out of the blue anymore. I think, I think this, um, gives us reasons to really engage with our neighbors and, and the people around us to build resilience. So I appreciate the tools that I've learned from, you know, both my courses. So, yeah.
Thank you all. That was so heartwarming to hear. Um, so maybe just a thumbs up if folks still feel like they can want or interested to hang on for a breakout or a thumbs down if you can't, that's fine too. Great. Okay. So it looks like we have, uh, maybe half of you will stay on. So, um, for those who are going to, um, stay on, we had queued up a couple prompts. Breakout, one being what are your needs right now or anticipated? And just to have an opportunity to share with, um, with this community and, and even maybe solutions will emerge. Oh, Jake, do you have a, oh, you're raising your hand to need to stay on or? And then the second breakout would be how do we leverage economic resilience for the next economy in this time? So yeah, I really appreciated the, the comments that many of you made around that. And so what we're gonna do is just, it'll be a random breakout group. I'm not sure if, I don't know how to use Zoom to be able to name two breakout rooms and have you opt into them. But feel free to, um, identify one of those prompts that you want to talk about as a group or even just personally. Any questions about that before I break up the group? Great. Will we come back together as a group? Yeah, that's a great question. So would 10 minutes work for folks for a breakout group? Does that feel like enough time? So these will be, these will be three to four participants for 10 minutes. So about two minutes per person to share if you, um, if you feel that. And, um, so I will break us up now to five rooms.
Yes, it's, I hear that's the site of another outbreak, right?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, haven't even checked the views in the last five days because I will completely be riddled with anxiety. And I'm like, I'm, I'm in Western Massachusetts, just doing, just hanging out with my parents. Just kind of haven't left the house in like the past four days. Or at least, you know, not really, not gone into anywhere that, that, that has more people than my parents. Yeah.
Awesome.
Hello, I thought I'd join and I'm noticing the recording might still be going on because I have the recording capabilities. So I wanted to name that before I, um.
Great. We, we forgot, we didn't, we don't know what the prompt is. Or is, was there a prompt?
Oh, you're muted.
You're muted. Erin?
What are your needs right now or anticipated? Or how do we support, um, local economies and, um, economic resilience? So either one of those.
I'm happy. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, buying gift cards. Very immediate feature.
I like what Kevin was talking about, um, and I think some other folks. But I think having a moratorium on mortgages and rents, um, is really important. Just on a systemic level and, and not seeing this as an, uh, opportunity for disaster capitalism.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so what are my needs and how can we support local economy? Yeah, I'm, I'm, again, I'm a gig worker. So my need is to create some economic opportunity for myself right now. And I'm trying to move forward on that in ways that also feel like they're feeding into the local economy and like mutual aid distribution network. So as I mentioned in my original share, I'm about to start like a big fundraiser for my herbalist collective. That will both like allow us to donate a lot of our medicinal products while also covering our like retail value of products and like paying ourselves some money to stay afloat in this time. So kind of like crowdsourcing funding, um, for retail purposes, but, but in a way that feels like it is.